A watch pot never boils, right? Oh, but a watch clock does turn. Good evening. The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Jean Emerson, pastor of New Beginnings Fellowship Church.
Please join us, we pray. Heavenly Father, we welcome you to this meeting. We thank you, oh Lord. We ask your blessing upon our city. We thank you for this city that we have, for those civil servants, elected officials, and those that give tirelessly of their efforts to keep us safe and to protect us and to watch over us. We thank you for that, Father. We ask that your presence would be here in our meeting tonight and that you would glorify your name in our midst. So, Lord, bless you and thank you for this time and be present here. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
We are honored to have Police Chief Mike Gutjel lead us in the pledge this evening.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you both. If you will recall, our last meeting in 2022, we were planning to present the Employee of the Year, but we had some difficulty because the recipient could not be with us. So now I'm going to ask Amy Lay to come up and make this very special presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Employee of the Year Award is the most prestigious award that employee can receive. It recognizes an employee who reflects the City of Dennison's core values. And hopefully, all of our employees have this memorized. We call her Stacy. Service, teamwork, accountability, commitment, and integrity. To deserve consideration for the award, the nominated employee must possess and demonstrate the following. They exemplify Stacy. They show exceptional effort during the past year, whether on special assignments or projects. They have a track record of going above and beyond their job duties. They have a positive can-do attitude, and they are an employee that others look up to, a true leader regardless of title. At this time, I would like to welcome Mary Tate to the podium.
I'm going to turn so I can address the public as well. So you let me know if you can't hear me, okay? I'll try to swivel so everyone can see me. Astute, tenacious, funny, curious, diligent, ethical. These attributes describe 2022's Employee of the Year. They are also the City of Dennison's core values of service, teamwork, accountability, commitment, and integrity. Diane York demonstrates these characteristics every day. Over the course of the last year, Diane has held multiple roles and adapted to whatever was put in front of her. She carried out various responsibilities despite leadership changes. Your peers applaud the work that you do and that you did. I am honored to present this award to you. And I've only been here for a short time, so I don't feel like it's totally earned. But I am so thankful that you are on my team, and I know others wish that you were on theirs. In a short time, I have watched you grow. You are always wanting to learn and keep asking questions, keep bringing your ideas, because all of us here are here to support you. Emma and Braylon, your mom is so special. She's fun and she's smart. And I bet she strikes sometimes because of that first story. But she loves you so, so very much, so don't forget that. And for you to be a part of this here tonight shows you how much we respect your mom. Lisa, Michael, and Ruth Ann, thank you so very much for instilling in your daughter a strong work ethic. We are so grateful to have her as part of our team. Diane.
Speak.
Don't you always tell me to be brief?
No, thank you so much.
I will say, this is very meaningful. I want to say first, thank you to my leaders this past year. It was, you all were very patient with me, and I really appreciate that. You were guiding me as best as you can or could through the whole transition process. Thank you to council for being patient with me while I was learning, because I learned on the fly, and I'm still learning, so I appreciate your patience. Same with our planning and zoning commission. Obviously, none of them are here. Ms. Mary, you're here. Thank you for your patience through my learning process. And there are two people who are not here, but Felicia Winfrey and Melanie Heimer in our planning office and then in the utility customer service office both helped me get through it. And without their help, I don't know if I could have. So I really appreciate everybody's support. This is really awesome. Sorry if I'm crying. Grateful people.
Are y'all coming too?
Thank you.
Our Sister Cities program is something that we're very proud of. Our relationship with Cognac France is something that has been ongoing for, I'm not sure, 20-plus years. And so, we are very excited tonight to make a very special Sister City presentation. Rachel Reiner is going to introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here tonight and for giving us the time to speak for a moment. And I'd like to introduce the Board Chair of the Sister Cities Board of Director, Ms. Carrie Bodiger. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gott and Council members. It is truly an honor to represent the Sister Cities organization here this evening. Something that's very near and dear to my heart as my children participated in the youth exchange. I was able to go as a chaperone one year, and we still are in touch with our counterparts in Cognac. And it's just a special thing to have. And then with the mural now that is advertising that relationship, it's just been a special year as well. I'm going to say a few words, and then we're going to recognize a gift that's been made to the Sister Cities organization. Dennison is proud to be Sister Cities with Cognac France during the phylloxera epidemic in the mid-1800s, which destroyed a vast majority of wine grapes in Europe. Dennison horticulturist TV Munson worked with cognac native Pierre Viala to pioneer methods of creating phylloxera-resistant vines. This work earned Munson an induction into the French Legion of Honor and paved the way for the Sister City relationship that we cherish today. The Sister Cities International Program was formed by another Dennison native, President Dwight D. Eisenhower, to enable citizens from throughout the world to learn more about each other through exchanges and promote understanding and appreciation at all levels of a community. Dennison Sister Cities hosts an exchange program with a group of students from Dennison High School and students from Cognac France. This trip will take place this summer, and it'll be the first time since 2019. We do have five students selected, and we're very excited for that program to see another year. In 2022, Iron Root Republic Distillery celebrated their eighth anniversary and released the first bottling from the new sleight-of-hand series, the highly anticipated Sister Cities Blend. The Sister Cities Blend honors Dennison's 150th birthday and Dennison's special connection with Cognac France, thanks to famous resident TV Munson. The SCB combines a 10-year-old cognac with an eight-year-old Chenin Blanc brandy distilled in 2014. A portion of the purchase from every bottle has been donated to support Sister Cities program in Dennison. So we want to thank Iron Root for the contribution to the Sister Cities program. So we would like their representatives to come up now.
Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure to be here. We always say that we think fate brought us to Dennison, and a lot of that had to do with the TV Munson story. It affects not only the way we distill, it affects our aging process. And every time we do a tour, every Saturday, we talk about the history. And having been in education for over 20 years, what we do understand is that if we do not support history, if we do not teach our children history, then it is forgotten. And so it was really important for us to take the proceeds from part of our Sister Cities blend to support Sister Cities. We've had the pleasure of going to Cognac, meeting the people of Cognac, working with the distillers of Cognac, and we continue on. We even have a new project coming out soon with plantation rum, the Maison Ferrand Cognac House of France. So what we are trying to do is continue our history that TV Munson started. And by doing this and creating our relationships, we're hoping that we can continue to build. And it is only through our children and the education that we can bring to Dennison and send it back to Cognac that we can keep this history alive. So it is with great pleasure that we thank you for this opportunity. We love being in Dennison, and we thank each one of you for supporting us. And if it wasn't for you supporting what we get to do and love to make every day, we wouldn't be here. But thank you so much. And it was with great pleasure that we present a check for $1,500 to help those students with the education and continuing our history. Thank you.
The fun part. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Well, last year, we had the honor to celebrate our sesquicentennial. And when we began the planning process, we said that we wanted to have at least 150 different kinds of celebrations. And we challenged people to go out and find their own way to celebrate our 200th, our 150th birthday. I'm really getting us on up there, aren't I? And so, there was a lot of activity going on out at the pool. So I'm going to introduce Justin Eastwood and let him tell you about the creativity that happened during the sesquicentennial this last year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Justin?
Well, good evening. As Mayor mentioned, 2022 was Dennison's 150th birthday.
Justin, if you're going to talk to the audience, then stand so that you're the... There you go.
All right, I can pull this off. All righty. So 2022 was Dennison's 150th birthday, a time for celebrating our story, connecting with our neighbors, and showcasing what makes our city special. Hard work, unwavering passion, and the thrill of progress defined Dennison at its founding in 1872. These principles, along with the high ideals of civic devotion and community spirit, combined to create a city unlike any other. Sticking with the principles that made our city great, parks and recreation enthusiasts were challenged to work hard and undertake 150 miles of swimming or competing in 150 fitness classes at Waterloo Pool. To commemorate the city's sesquicentennial year, these participants took on that challenge. A few interesting facts. Forty-seven individuals participated in the 150-mile challenge for a grand total of 2,400 miles. 157 individuals participated in the 150 fitness class challenge for a combined total of over 5,220 classes. Of those that completed the challenge, there are a few special participants that we would like to highlight today by providing them a certificate of achievement for their memorable accomplishments and place them in Dennison's history. We are honored, if I can invite Mayor down? So, our honorable mayor was the first one to encourage participation when she kicked off the initial statement for our city. So this is what she said. "Everyone is invited to celebrate our town, and we sincerely hope that many of you will create and start planning your own Dennison 150 experiences as part of this year's sesquicentennial." So we're honored to have our mayor help me hand out the awards. This is Ron Curry. Mr. Ron Curry?
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. Ron, stay up with us so we can have a picture.
Mr. George Higginbon. Ernest McDaniel.
Congratulations, Ernest.
Joel McDaniel.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Vicki Andrus.
Congratulations, Vicki.
Thank you.
Anne Price.
Congratulations, Anne.
Francois Baker.
Congratulations, Francois.
Austin Thompson. Nellie Guile.
Congratulations, Nellie.
And last but certainly not least, Nancy Smathers, who I believe is 91 years of age.
It's my challenge, wow.
It's wonderful.
Well, Nancy, you're my new hero.
Well, thank you, dear. Thank you. Nothing's more enjoyable than those swimmin'.
There you go.
That's true.
Okay, so Mary, what do you need to get a picture?
I'd like everybody in front of the podium as close together as possible.
Can you get in closer? Can you get in? Chill, chill.
In every meeting, we set aside times where citizens may speak on any agenda item that requires an action from the council. In order to speak, you must fill out a request-to-speak card and give it to the city clerk prior to reaching this point in our meeting. Ms. Wallantine, do we have any request-to-speak cards?
We have one turned in, and I wish citizens pulled their requests, so we now have it.
All right, therefore, we'll have no public comments. The consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve items 4A through 4Q on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for an indoor amusement without alcohol sales for downtown escape rooms located at 318 West Chestnut Street, case number 2021-138CUP. Ms. York. Diane, on behalf of myself and the entire council, congratulations. That was very well deserved.
Thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate it. Good evening. The first item I have for you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit for indoor amusement without alcohol sales. This may look familiar to the council. It came before the commission back in October of '21, where they recommended approval for this CUP, and then council later approved the CUP on November 1st, 2021. The applicant requested a certificate of occupancy in order to operate their business. And at that time, we found a condition within the conditional use permit that they had to obtain that CO within 180 days of the approval of the CUP. And they had exceeded that 180 days. So with that, staff is bringing forth the exact same request for a conditional use permit. The parameters have not changed. The property is zone central area. There's adequate parking with the available parking lots we have around 318 West Chestnut. The hours of operation have not changed. And therefore, staff is asking that the council consider reapproving the CUP without that condition of 180 days of obtaining the CO. The applicant has been granted a temporary CO for the time so that they can move forward with trying to get their business in operation. And the Planning and Zoning staff, or the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended approval at their meeting on January 10th, and staff recommends approval of their request. And I'm present for any questions.
Questions for Ms. York. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance for a conditional use permit for indoor amusement without alcohol sales for downtown escape rooms located at 318 West Chestnut. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance rezoning Lot 10, Block 10 of the Grand View Edition, consisting of approximately .14 acres, addressed as 532 West Florence, from Neighborhood Services to Single Family Five, residential, case number 2022-137Z. Ms. York.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to rezone 532 West Florence Street. This is an aerial view of the subject property. It's at the corner of Myrick and Florence. It's currently zoned Neighborhood Services. Predominantly, the neighborhood has been developed in a residential manner. The lot adjacent to this property on the east is actually not zoned Neighborhood Services. It was rezoned in 2021 for Single Family Five. There is a dwelling on that property. And for that reason, staff believes that an SF5 zoning is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. The applicant came... The rezone was discovered during a permit request for a fence. We determined at that time that the zoning was not residential, and so therefore, we reached out to the applicant and asked them to pursue a rezoning in order to avoid any kind of issues with selling the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting held on January 10th, and staff recommends approval of the proposed request. I'm present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Questions for Ms. York. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from Neighborhood Services zoning district to the SF5 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for the use of auto sales used for property located at 131 East St. Street, case number 2022-138CUP. Ms. York.
Thank you, ma'am. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for indoor auto sales. We actually do not have a use for indoor auto sales use. And because of the zoning... We actually do not have a use for indoor auto sales use, and because of the zoning, staff is bringing forth this conditional use permit for that use. The property is currently split zoned between light industrial and commercial, a, in order to operate a used auto dealership or have a business for used auto sales in the light industrial or in the commercial zoning district, a C U P is required. The applicant has stated that all auto sales will be online. They do have an accessory use of minor auto repair. He will obtain some motor vehicles and some motorcycles, minorly repair them, and then sell them online. He stated, the applicant stated, that there will be no outdoor storage of these vehicles. And because most of the operation, if not all of the operation, will be taking place indoors, staff is recommending that the only condition be placed on this C U P is the prohibiting outside storage. The property is adjacent to other light industrial and commercial zoning districts, therefore, screening isn't necessarily required. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting held on January tenth. Staff recommends approval, and I'm present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Questions for Ms. York. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. So the condition was that, that the, that outdoor storage be prohibited, so does that need to be included in the motion?
It does not if it's in the actual ordinance itself, just approval of the ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance for a conditional use permit for an auto sales used for property located at one thirty-one East Sears with the condition of no outside storage.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. York. Item six A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for water and sewer system improvements. Well, I guess I'm just supposed to recognize you, Lori, because there's nothing on my sheet. Ms. Osobone.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. During the twenty twenty-three budget process, water and sewer capital project needs were discussed. With Dennison's growth, our infrastructure needs are requiring costly improvements and expansions. These projects include, but are not limited to, the new Lake Texoma raw water pump station and transmission line, the Rilent Water Treatment Plant expansion, the Duck Creek Interceptor reconstruction, Phase One of the Waterloo gravity sewer line replacement, and other system improvements. So staff is requesting approval of a resolution to publish notice of intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. The principal amount will not exceed forty-two million five hundred thousand, and payments will be funded from water and sewer revenue. Notices will be published on our website and in the newspaper on January twenty-second and twenty-ninth. The ordinance for the issuance will come before council on March twentieth, and the funding is scheduled to occur April nineteenth. Again, we're just here to request approval to publish the notice of intent, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Osobone?
Thank you. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution directing publication of a notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates, certifications of obligation for water and sewer improvements.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Courtwright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Items six B and six C, I will recuse myself, and the meeting will be conducted by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley. Let the record show that the mayor has left the dais.
Item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the Third Amendment to the twenty nineteen mowing and maintenance agreement between the City of Dennison and Stephen Folencheck, DVA SF Landscaping, for the continued mowing and maintenance services of the City of Dennison-owned, City of Dennison-owned properties, right-of-way and vacant lots in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Good evening, council. Chip Egger, the Parks Administrative Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening about the amendment to these agreements. Generally, these amendments are to allow for the final of the possible renewals to continue the mowing and maintenance services with SF Landscaping. These major changes to this agreement will include extending the agreement for one more year, taking us through September of twenty twenty-three. There are cost increases to the line items due to inflation over the past two years. We have not taken on any cost increases in the past two years, and there were additions to the scope of work on these agreements as well. Staff recommends, excuse me, staff recommends executing the agreement with SF Landscaping for one more year, and I'm present for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chip. Discussion from council. If not, is there a motion?
Mayor Pro Tim, I move to approve the Third Amendment to the two thousand and nineteen mowing and maintenance agreement between the City of Dennison and Stephen Folencheck, doing businesses SF Landscaping, for the continued mowing and maintenance services of City of Dennison-owned properties, right-of-ways, and vacant lots in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Hender, second by Councilwoman Spiegel, to approve the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the Third Amendment of the twenty nineteen Utilities Mowing and Maintenance Agreement between the City of Dennison and Stephen Folencheck, DVA SF Landscaping, for the continued mowing and maintenance services of the City of Dennison-owned properties in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same. Chip.
Thank you, council. This agreement, very similar to the one we just approved. Utilities agreement mostly is the utility sites around town with a few smaller rights of way that are also maintained by the City of Dennison. Again, extending the agreement for one more year through September of twenty twenty-three, same cost increases due to inflation over the past two years, and we have also added additional scopes of work based on the needs presented through other departments of the City of Dennison. Staff recommends entering into that agreement with SF Landscaping for the final renewal period, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Any discussion by council? Is there a motion?
Mayor Pro Tim, I move to approve the Third Amendment to the two thousand and nineteen Utilities Mowing and Maintenance Agreement between the City of Dennison and Stephen Folencheck, doing businesses SF Landscaping, for the continued mowing and maintenance services of City of Dennison in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hender and a second by Councilwoman Spiegel to approve the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We can invite the mayor back. Welcome back.
Let the record reflect that the mayor returned to the dais at six thirty-eight. We will not entertain item six D until after the executive session. We will return to it at that point. Item seven A, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding an ordinance amendment to the Animal Advisory Committee's yearly meeting requirement. Mr. Lay.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I hope to bring you the shortest project update ever here. The Animal Advisory Committee was formed in two thousand sixteen. The original ordinance stated that it meet three times a year. With the blessing of the council, we would bring a proposed ordinance to a future meeting that would just state that the committee would meet as needed, but no less than one time per year. I would be happy to answer any questions about that.
Questions for Mr. Lay? This does not require action from the councils. Thank you, Mr. Lay. Pursuant to chapter five five one Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Section five five one dot zero seven one. Confer with city attorney regarding twenty-eight twenty-four West Crawford. Confer with city attorney regarding wholesale water to Northern Hills Development Community Water System. Confer with city attorney regarding redevelopment within downtown historic district. Confer with city attorney regarding three twenty-seven West Main. Confer with city attorney regarding enforcement of minimum property standards. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC et al., three ninety-seven District Court, Grayson County, Texas. Confer with city attorney regarding unattended donation bin regulations. The time is six forty-one, and the council is now in executive section.